I'm Johan Roche Vega and we are in the sound room of Holyoke Media, One Court Plaza in Holyoke Mass. I want to welcome Paddy LeWalle, who is the newly elected member of the school committee for Ward Six in this past election of November 4, 2025. Paddy will be joining the school committee in the next cycle in 2026, and that will be the inauguration that is happening in the first days of January, January 5th.
Yep.
And it will be a new beginning with a lot of great opportunities happening for the city of Holyoke, for the school committee, for the school district, and for the community in general.
Yeah, thank you first for having me. I appreciate it. Yeah, it's an exciting time. It's an opportunity for us to reflect and figure out, you know, where and how we want to go forward under local control, which we have not had for the last 10 years. So I'm excited to work with some new colleagues and figure out where we go from here. But it's a really exciting time and it's a, you know, it's an opportunity for us to really make some, some big changes, I feel.
One thing that is important to mention is how you became the newly elected school committee representative for Ward Six, because even though it has happened in the past, but it was so unique that there was a certified candidate who had to withdraw, and then there was no candidate officially on the ballot for Ward Six for school committee. So you had to be elected by the resource of writing?
Yes. Yeah, it was an interesting experience, and I didn't intend to run for school committee, but when I realized that our neighborhood would be left without representation if I did not jump in, it made me want to. And that was primarily because of my experience as a parent in Hoyoke Public Schools. I had raised my boys through the schools over the last, you know, 10 to 15 years. My youngest graduated a couple of years ago, and both boys had very distinct experiences in Hoyoke Public Schools. My eldest was able to avail himself of all the programming, the AP classes, the internships, and so on and so forth. My younger son, who really enjoyed Hoyoke Athletics and was successful in that, but in his schooling, he has dyslexia, of which he's spoken publicly about before. He did not have that same experience in school, and he is one of the three, one in three kids in Hoyoke Public Schools. He's part of that group that had a learning disability. And the difference between the two boys' experience, for me as a mom, going through that with him and the IEP process, it showed me a lot of things. One, it showed me that there is a lack of education about learning disabilities and how it impacts the classroom, how it can impact wide ranges of students, not just students who have disabilities, but students who have English as a second language, who also might have a learning disability, or those students who we talk about, the one, the over 50% who don't come to school, you know, and some of those students may have learning disabilities as well and are not showing up. So there's a little bit of cross connection that's going on. But when I think about my experience, one of the fundamental things that I also noticed as in my day job, I'm a strategy consultant and solve problems, organizational problems for a living, and I would go into meetings in the school, and I would see a lot of processes and procedures that were faulty, that were underserving not just the students before them, but the families and also the teachers in the classroom because they were ineffective processes and procedures operationally. And so when I got, when Pat Boudry, who had to drop out, had suggested, maybe you should think about it, that's really where my mind went, because I, I didn't have an outlet for that, right? I was the parent that was showing up, the one that was like, you know, the squeaky wheel, the one that was sending the emails, the one that was demanding the meetings. I was that parent for advocating for my, my child as I should be. But I also was the parent that was like, hey, have you thought about, you know, how you're getting your IEPs to your teachers at the beginning of the school year? Because it comes the same time every year, and why aren't they having it, right? You know, and I was thinking about those questions from a process procedure. So that was what really got me into the race in three and a half weeks to do a writing campaign, because I was passionate about those things.
And with your experience being involved with many aspects of the school activities and the experiences as a parent, as someone who has seen, not only as a parent, but also as someone involved in the operations or the structure of things in the school district.
Yeah.
This definitely brings a deeper insight and perspective that sometimes gets, passes by in the eyes of people who may not have any of these situations in their regular life, and they just may get the idea, oh, everything is fine, especially when we have this particular situation where the only thing that is being said is, we have our control back of the schools. But what does that exactly mean, though?
Yeah, I think that's a fair question, because while we, we have some parameters around us still, you know, in, in, I think it's two, two years that where we have still some connection to the state, even though we do, can resume bargaining and we can resume some of that local, local control. But it's not, it wasn't 100%, but even getting that 100% back, right, to, to have that local control, it's, what do we, what do we do with that local control? How can we be when we have, you know, there's a lot of work that needs to be done at the school committee level. We haven't had to look at a lot of policies and things that we as members of the board help shape, right? And so looking at that, are they updated? And I know that, just talking to some colleagues since I've been elected, you know, that there's, that there's work underway right now to update policies and procedures and to help that. But, but it doesn't, it's not, it's a beginning, right? It's not a, you know, we've won the day, right? It's, it's a new opportunity to start fresh and to look about, you know, who do we want to be, you know, almost like, who do we want to be when we grow up, right? We have this opportunity to really start to rethink and to be accountable to our community and to our students, because it's about our students and the students' outcomes. You know, how do we need to show up for them in order to see some progress? Because, you know, I can tell you, in the last, you know, 27 to 30 years prior to the work that I do now, I used to be a newspaper reporter, and when I was a young woman, before I had my children, I was covering Hoyoke Schools. And I covered that same story that, and, you know, I, I printed out something from 1998 today and to review. And that story could have been written today about MCAS scores. And that's 27 years. That is a generation of students that we have not been able to, to help be as successful as, as we certainly know that they can be, and the possibility that they show up before us in our classrooms. So what are we doing about that, right? And, and we really have to think long and hard about what levers are we pulling? What stakeholder relationships are we building and leaning on? You know, that, is that at City Hall? It is at, is it at the State House? You know, who, who else do we need in the room with us to make some measurable income? Because 20, measurable impact, because 27 years is too long to be having the same conversation without any measurable improvement.
And going back to the, to the first statements in this conversation, this is a perfect opportunity to start having those conversations and to start looking forward on finding those solutions and not only having extended discussions on things that end up just being put to continue and not really have action plans for it, that you can see some results. And yes, errors are part of this process, but it needs to have some sort of progress. So I can see that you have been active on these ideas and these plans, not even since you got elected, actually when you were campaigning.
Yeah.
And the moment it was official that you became the, the member for school committee Ward Six, you took action already and you are doing a listening tour. So what is happening on all of this and how this is helping you getting ready to start as officially being a member of the school committee in January?
Yeah, so, you know, this is kind of an ethos of mine. So if I take a new leadership position, regardless of whether it was school committee or at work or what have you, is you can't go into a new role. You may have some ideas, but until you start to talk to people and understand things from their lens, you can't really have, get your arms around what the issues or challenges are, particularly when you're walking into a change project, which this is. This is a really big transformation project, right, for our schools and this opportunity for our, our community. And so one of the fundamental things that I do is at work would be a 30, 60, 90 day plan, which is you go in and you reassess, you know, what, what do you need to learn, the kind of the perfunctory things, and then you start to talk to people, and then you start to maybe form some opinions about things, or also assess your own skill set, like where would I be most effective, right? Like, that's what you're looking for. And so with the run up to the election and then being elected, I only have 60 days till I get office. So I felt like I had to have that bias towards action to start to do things. So while it was great to get a, a packet for onboarding about different things, you know, about the schools and, and on all of that, I felt that I didn't have the time to waste to not start to talk to people, right, and start to really get beyond my own lens of my own personal experience that I shared earlier, and, and find out from others whether that, those folks were at Suffolk Street, whether they were at the State House, whether they were in the community, just definitely, you know, what are they thinking? What do they see? What, what, what would they like to see changed if they had a magic wand? And just, and just kind of get into conversations like that. So I've just been meeting with as many people that would pick up the phone and say yes, just to kind of learn some, some more.
What it has been, some of that new perspective you have gotten so far in this, in this listening tour?
Well, I think, you know, I, I think I was kind of met with two reactions. One was like, oh yeah, I'd love to sit down and talk, and others were more wary of, of that from a motive perspective. And, and I think that that kind of tracks with the school system in general. There is a lack of trust across many stakeholder groups, whether, when I was going door to door campaigning and talking to people about the schools, or just, you know, hearing from teachers at a teacher tea that I went to, where there was just this, this very lack of trust or not feeling respected in, in those venues. So I think people were skeptical when they were like, okay, who is this newcomer on the scene? And, and, you know, it reminds me of like, the old adage when I was a little kid, of like, oh, who does she think she is? Well, I'm just me. I don't have all the answers, but I'm curious and I want to learn from other people that I, that I don't have the same perspective as them. And that's really the extent of it. And I think what I've heard is people are very passionate about helping our students, but people are also tired because they may feel that they don't have the resources, or they may be, you know, something might make sense because, you know, a community room in Bowden Village, for example, where is in my ward, has to close at four o'clock. But you can't really do any kind of family outreach in that community if the community room is closed at four o'clock because people work, right? So like, there's decisions that are made that, that can be fixed, but it's been kind of accepted, like, oh, this is the way, right? You know, like when I was talking with the Sheriff's Department, and they do volunteer in the community, and I was reaching out to, to Bill Kershane, who works there, and, you know, we met, and I was telling him, you know, like, oh, I really want to do this, but we don't have a venue, and I would like, you know, I'd like to get into the community and talk to people. And so, so we're working on that, right? That's, that's one, one thing, to get out to, in front of people, and parents, especially in kids. But, you know, the other, the other piece that I, that I heard was, again, we talked about policies and procedures, you know, there is a, there's a lot of work. It's not the sexy glamorous work that you might think, you know, when you're talking about policy and reading through, you know, the fine print and all the addendums and things that go into that, but it's really important work because it shapes our future. So how do we tell a different story to get people excited about that? You know, I was told that a lot of our policies and procedures are out on the, the website. I didn't know that as a parent. I've been in, I've been in the system, or just left the system, right, with my, my youngest graduating a couple of years ago. And I didn't realize that you could give your feedback on that. So, you know, how are we communicating? You know, these are the little notes that I'm, I'm jotting down, you know, how, what are the ways that we're communicating? What are the venues we're communicating in? And, and what is that, what is that, what does success look like if, you know, I'm just one person, I didn't know, but how many, I would love to know, like, how many edits do you get on those policies, you know? So I'm excited about what I've learned, because the, many of the people that I spoke to have been really enthusiastic about their perspective, and I've learned a lot about different education. And I was so excited. I went to Sullivan School, and I also went to McMahon School, where many of my constituents' kids go. And it was, it was, they were amazing experiences to walk and sit in the school and, and be involved in that. There's, there's just a hub and there's an excitement with kids and the parents and the teachers that were working in there. At McMahon, it was Friday Dance Party Day and for the K through the third grade. And, you know, we, I started my day on a Friday dancing. So I, you know, it, and these are things that are positive, that we don't always, those don't make the headlines, right? So those, that good work and with, with students is going on, and I am aware of that. And I, and so I know that there's success, and I don't want to be that, that person that's saying, oh, there's all these problems. But I also feel that in order to be in a healthy relationship, right, with a school, you know, with your leadership, with management and, and so on, that you, you have to talk about things that are hard. You have to be able to show up and listen to something that you may not want to hear, right? You, you have to have that open ear and open lens, and that includes myself. You know, I have to also listen in, in reverse. And so that's really what the listening tour is about, you know? And I think, I think we should do more of that, you know, and we should be, but we have to be open to it first. We have to be able to trust. And to me, it also said that we have some work to do in trust building.
Trust building, and as you mentioned as well, the communication, because oftentimes it's said by the school district that everything is on the website, which, as you, as you stated, is true.
Yeah.
Yet, not everybody knows what it means, everything, and where exactly it is.
Right. And I will, I have to tell you, I did this, this was before I was running for office, but I will share this with you. I had to speak for work at a conference called Disability Inn, and so it's a business resource group, so of which I'm a part of at work. We were talking about accessibility and we were presenting at this conference. And, and so many of the largest companies in the world are at this conference. And in the big showroom that you go to, there are lots of different companies that help look at accessibility and on the school website. And so just for, you know, just as a little test, they said, okay, give me a website and I'll see how it's accessible. And I typed it in, and there were many points where the Hoyoke website was inaccessible, meaning that, you know, they had broken links, or there were just different ways that they were looping them to the same information, but not the information that you needed, you know, just little tiny things that are called the Web Content Accessibility Guidelines, right? And that just were not adhered to. So, and I share that with you, not to fault anyone, but just to say, you know, we have to listen, you know, when, when I, when you said that to me, like, I was, I, the, the answer was like, well, it's on the website, but the website's not doing it, right? Like, it's, so it, it didn't help that particular constituent group. So what would, right? There's lots of different communication that, that people could do, just in the same way that we do the walking bus route, right, like down where, where kids are walking to school, but it's that, that, that functional community building opportunity that has taken hold. It's a wonderful opportunity, but that was creative thinking out of the box. And, and I think we have to think about that from a communication lens, right, from a timing lens. And sometimes we have to say a message multiple times in different ways and different venues to different people before we get it.
So the experience that you are getting right now with the listening tour is definitely giving you strong points to consider and to bring to the conversations once the school committee begins its session in 2026. And while this may sound similar to asking a question during campaigning, what are your plans? What do you intend to do? Should you be elected? Sounds similar, but now that you are already working on it, what do you ambition taking care of, particularly with this new information you are gathering and a perspective of urgency or priority on many aspects that need to be addressed, but some of them may be more important to start talking about as soon as the, the year begins compared with others. But what are some of the plans that you have in mind that would you like to work on?
I, I think for me, the fundamental priority in my mind is, is special education. And I say that, you know, from, from a committee lens, but also being able to ask questions. I mean, I was observing a, a meeting at the school committee the other night, and they were talking about the MCAS report, and we mentioned that one in three students are on an IEP, but that whole report and the progress didn't touch about disability, students with disabilities at all in the conversation, other than to mention that stat. And, you know, when we treat one of the biggest issues that are facing our high needs population as a sidecar, when we are not having conversations about that, when we do not have active memberships with the Federation for Children with Special Needs and MPAC, when our, in our CPAC, this is, we have a person that I know who is jumped into that seat to start to chair it, and I'm super excited about that. But that's a community that can be strengthened, that will strengthen our insight as a board into what are some of the challenges that parents are seeing at that level. I mean, when I, I mentioned the HTA, the Hoyoke Teachers' Association Tea, I've never seen a groundswell of parents at a meeting like that in the 10 to 15 years that I have been, unless it was something to do with, I think I went to one big meeting where there was some, there was about fights at the high school, and there was a lot of people there for that one. But, but other than just my, my CPAC meetings that I chaired as vice chair, had not gotten that kind of parent involvement. And that said to me a couple of things. It said, there was a high level of trust with the teachers that were in that room that were engaging in that conversation. And it said that we, as leaders in the community, as a school committee member, we, we can start to develop those relationships and to create that trust and to want to hear, not just at the public meeting and at public comment, but also having conversations like this about, you know, we, we want to hear from people. We want to see you. We want you to come to the meeting. We want you to tell us what you want to see in a meeting. You know, these are conversations that we can continue to have by, by, by reaching out. So I'm excited about working on that issue in some way, shape, or form in the capacity that the board allows, right? And this is also a new board, so I'm not like coming in there and demanding, but I would, you know, and I told you, you had to let this down the other day when we met, and I said, you know, I want you to use me where my skill sets can, can benefit the board, you know, and where it can benefit the community and the student outcomes that we're all working so hard to seek, you know, and that's really where I want to go. But my, my passion with special education is definitely there because I do consider it a conduit to success. I don't, I, I feel like we have not really paid, it's not that we haven't paid attention to that, but we have not looked at it as part of the broader school community. It's been an other. And when you look at the numbers, it is us, right? And we are all at the table, and we make decisions where not everyone is at the table. And I think that's gotten us into some situations that were avoidable, frankly.
Thinking on how this can be such a new way to integrate the dynamics of not only communication, but also interaction and collaboration, team building, community building. An example, with some of students that I have doing internship here at Hoyoke Media, some of them with IP, and I, I'm aware of the challenges, the limitations, and the particular aspects that I need to be aware for every day, every time they are here. And it's been interesting how we have had conversations as a group, figuring out how can we help and support each other, understanding those situations and seeing it as part of the nature of the team, not as anything else, not as, and of course, never as a label. And it's been so positive to see the way they interact with each other, they support each other. It really became even a teaching experience for myself to see how strong and resilient they are and how determined they are to succeed, once they are in an environment that allows them to be seen as they are, respected and supported, which I'm not saying this to put the school in, in, in a situation where they are not doing it. I can see that they are trying. I can see that they are saying they are doing it.
Of course.
But it's the, the execution that is lacking that additional level of understanding that you need to meet people where they are.
Yeah, I, I completely agree. And you're describing an atmosphere that has very deep belonging, right? Like, and that they felt, the, the kids that you were describing just felt that, that they could do and they could help, and that they were a valued part of that community that was built there. And, and, and that's what we're striving for. But when we leave people out of the decision-making process, when we are instituting things where we are not talking with stakeholders first, that is really hard, again, to, to build that trust and to build that community when you don't consider them first, or you come from a lens of, I know best. So if I think about it from my listening tour even, like, I was legitimately not coming from an I know best. It was like, I need to know what I need to know so I can do this job well, right? And I, my own lens is not going to do it, right? So, but that was still met a, a little bit with some people with a little bit of, of distrust or, you know, or that I do think that I know best, you know, it was when it was quite the opposite. So, so I, I think, when I, when I think about the schools and about the trust and, and what we're trying, what we're trying to build, it's like, who is not at our table when we're making decisions, right? When, you know, who have we not talked to? Whether that is a broad-based decision across the district, or whether it's in an individual classroom. When, when we give kids access to the curriculum in the same way that curb cuts give people who are physically disabled an access to your building, right? That happens in Hoyoke Public Schools now. It happens disparately. It happens in some classrooms. Those are behaviors that are not scaled. These are behaviors that I'm told aren't always talked about at professional, professional development days, but you have one in three students who have learning disabilities. You know, that is, to me, a three alarm fire, a five alarm fire, right? Like, I mean, that, there's something that is, is missing and disconnected there. And when we think about graduation requirements and, you know, you know, MCAS scores, and we're always talking about, you know, that it's, it's not where it needs to be. And that's true. I'm not saying it's not, but it's one data point. How else are our students being measured? How else can they show mastery? Just because a student is not prolific at writing an essay, but could show you that same mastery and understanding of the lesson by doing a podcast or by doing a PowerPoint, does that mean that they haven't met the skills required? Like, I, I don't think that that does. And that gets to where I was talking about on the campaign trail about universal design being foundational in classrooms, not just, at every stage of the multi-tiered system, not just, you know, at those higher level needs. It, it should be an act, accessible, because that's how the workplace is. You know, I have a job because I am great at communications. That's my skill set, right? But, you know, you wouldn't put me in a developer role where I'm, you know, behind the scenes, you know, and, and you and I shared some labs where I was, you know, trying to use my thumb drive. So I mean, you know, I mean, over the years. So, so it, it's, it's thinking about, you know, how do we show mastery? How can we get that same great outcome, that same strong outcome with that sense of self, with the students that we have in front of us? And, I mean, I, like I said, I've raised my two kids to the school system. I have seen teachers doing that work. They're just, work is not being scaled. And so the customer experience, if you will, is, is extremely inconsistent.
Thinking about the community at large, when they hear terms as school committee, and maybe for multiple reasons, they don't know what exactly that means, or what is the word that they do. How will you engage with that sector of the community or the public in, in general, with or without kids in the school, to know what is the work that it happens, and how important it is for everybody to be involved and participate, particularly because it's this perception that if I don't have kids in the school, this doesn't matter to me, or why should I care for this? And even from the perspective as someone who has no kids in the school, but is interested on, but sometimes I feel like, if I don't have a kid in the school, I don't belong to that community and I don't get access to any information. How will you engage the community to learn and understand what it means, this work? How will you engage the community to learn and understand what it means this work? And at the same time, tell the school district, you need to engage with everybody in the city because everybody's part of this.
One hundred percent. I mean, I, I, I love this question because that's one of the things that I was super excited about. And there, there was one, one thing not stuck with me with my brief three and a half week campaign, um, going door to door. And there was one woman, I was standing on her porch and I knocked on her door and she said, oh, I don't have kids in the school. And I said, well, neither do I anymore. I said, my youngest son graduated two years ago. I said, but I'm here, I'm running. And I'm running because I believe that, you know, we have a collective responsibility to the community that we love to think about how we're showing up for our students and giving them what we need. Because if we give them what they need, um, then we are building a healthier community for us all. And she said, oh, I never thought about that. Let me take your literature and I'll, you know, I'll think about it. And I was like, okay. And it stuck in the, it stuck in my head because, you know, okay, what, what makes me want to jump in, right? I don't have kids in the school anymore, so, you know, and then what was the difference there? And I, and so I mulled a lot about that, but then a couple of days later it was Halloween and I was talking to young parents, they have three kids. And they were um, in the schools and they weren't going to vote, you know, and I was, I was saying, oh, I said, why? You know, tell me why you're not going to vote. And they said, well, our voice doesn't matter. Nobody really cares. And it's, it's not something that, you know, you're, I said, well, I'm running for school committee and I explained what it was. And I said, you know, I really am running because, you know, my kids are older than your kids, but I was where you were. And they said, um, well, we'll think about it, you know, and I said, well, call me and my number's on my candy bar, so, you know. And, um, but I think about those two things because they're both Hoyok residents, those, those families, okay, different families. But they were still feeling a disconnect to the city that they live. And, you know, walk around in and shop in and, but they're so disconnected, right? From, from, from our, the health of our city overall, right? One, not just not, neither of them willing to participate in the process because they thought it didn't matter for different reasons. But that disconnection to me is so important and it's incumbent upon not just school committee leaders, but leaders in our city in general to start to think about, why is that occurring and what else might we be doing? To change that discourse and, and that's going to take, maybe not acting, like just waiting for public comment at the meeting or, you know, doing our, our roles which are busy and it, it, it might take a little bit more time um, than, than we may be used to or, or we might have to think about showing up at different venues um, than we're used to. Um, but we have to get out there and start talking about people. So I intend to really continue to do my door knocking now that I um, am elected. I'm not resting on my laurel, so to speak, you know, I, I, I want to go out and meet with people and, and talk to them regardless of where they live. So I mentioned that community uh, room in Boden Village. Um, that's a central hub for a lot of our families and, you know, I should have a presence there, right? I, as a school committee leader, I should be listening. Um, they should know me. They should know my face. Um, and um, they should feel free to call me, right? Um, and, and so I intend to, to try to bridge that relationship. Um, they should see me as an ally in the, in the schools, the schools where my constituents go. I want to know about the good news as well as the bad news. I want to be able to share, you know, in, in people's successes and trumpet that because I want those people that I met on the campaign trail who didn't have kids in the school system, who didn't see those stories. How else can I help elevate? You know, I do see our schools elevating stories. You know, they're doing a principal series now, um, and they just had this wonderful attendance um, fair for um, kids who are going to school. And those are, those are, those are great news stories, right? But they don't often get trumpeted. So how could we tell those stories in other venues? You know, those are the types of things that I'm taking notes on, my notebook in my bag of, you know, how, how might we change the course of the narrative in, in different ways that we haven't used before? Um, so I'm, I'm excited about that, but I, I plan to be talking to all stakeholders, right? Um, because that does matter. Um, but I do feel that we have a sense of responsibility as Hoyokers to take care of our city. And um, there's been a lot of decades of disinvestment, not just in the schools, but in, in a lot of our infrastructure. And I know there's many people that are trying to work on that as well, so it's not just me. But, um, but I, I think that that's something that has to be continued. We, we need to continually press on that. We deserve better.
And to that point is perfect opportunity and once again, I appreciate that you are here today talking about this. Because these conversations here in the studio are another way to create that connection and to promote those conversations. This room is big enough to have multiple people so we can share and exchange multiple points of discussion that are necessary. That sometimes cannot be discussed in specific sessions because protocol or because the space may not be the right one in terms of feeling comfortable about talking specific issues. But in here, I feel we have an opportunity to talk seriously about things that matter and at the same time, be as casual as possible because it's this natural and organic way of communicate that needs to be somehow rescued and restored to your point of uh, trust building. So if anything, um, this opportunity we are having today, uh, with this conversation is an open invitation for you to utilize the space as often as needed.
Yeah.
So that way, those conversations can happen with parents, with teachers, with administratives in the school district and with community in general.
Yeah, I think, I think we should be doing that in general and even, you know, some of your students who want to interview or want to learn more have um, serious questions. I mean, I, there was a young woman at the school committee meeting um, the other night that I was observing and, you know, she asked terrific pointed questions um, in the room that were um, just refreshing and to elevate voices like that in our community, you know, through your channels and other channels, we, you know, that is something that we can all do to, to lift those voices, right? And, and I think, you know, when, when we talk about trust and this, I feel like this is really important for Hoyok because I've lived in Hoyok all my life and the circles that I've lived in, like Hoyok being, you know, not for whatever, right? And, and it's, it's been something that has, has followed us around regardless of, of, of where, of where we live. Like, you know, you, you hear it about Hoyok. Hoyok is a wonderful community. It is a, it has been a great place to live. It's been a great place for me to raise my children. Um, you know, it doesn't, does it come with the challenges of, of a city? O- o- of course it does. But, you know, I wouldn't be here if I didn't believe in our potential as a, as a, as a people and as a community. And I, I wouldn't want to be here other, other way. And so when I say that, that means that building trust doesn't mean just telling the good stuff. It means being willing to talk about the things that are hard. It means being willing to talk to people with respect, even if you don't agree with them. It means, you know, treating people in a, in a way that, that they, that they can hear you. And it means expanding the table, right? It means expanding the table to others who may not want to be there. Like if Suffolk Street is making a decision, you know, have we talked to teachers about this? Is this a top-down decision? Is this a decision that's going to be held? You know, if this is a school committee decision and we're creating a policy, how have we talked to the stakeholders about it? What type of feedback? Should we be getting more feedback? These are the questions that, that don't mean that someone's doing something wrong per se, right? It just means, how are we thinking about this and how is this going to impact our community? How is this going to impact our students? Does it make sense to drive student outcomes with whatever the flavor might be of, of what we're trying to do, right? These are, these are questions not to say that someone is wrong or that maybe they're on the wrong track, but it's to pressure test, right? It's to say, do we have change management in place to do a transformative, transformative exercise? Um, and do we have the resources and able to get it done and able to scale things? And if we don't, why are we doing it or should we pilot it? You know, we have to be able to have those conversations and we also have to be willing to not be wedded to our own ideas. And I use that again for myself. You know, I am a very passionate person, as you know, and, and I can get wedded to my own ideas with the best of them. But I also have the self-awareness to know that when I start to feel that way, I have to check myself, right? Because I, I, I don't know everything and I can't always know what someone else is feeling unless I talk to them. And sometimes that has to be willing to have those conversations, right? And that's, and I think that's where trust is built, right? That's, and because otherwise you're just not getting a full picture.
So how do you feel? How, how personally, professionally and as a community member of Hoyok feel as the day where you are officially going to be member of the school committee? With everything that uh, comes in private, makes you feel today in all senses?
I am, I'm so excited, you know, to, to help people, to, to help my community, to be back in my community. Um, not that I have left my community, but as life ebbs and flows, you know, we shift and our priorities, you know, raising children and, 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 um, and uh, taking on different jobs and so forth. You, you know, kind of like I was focusing in nonprofits and doing volunteer work and doing those things um, that I did um, just at a different scale. Um, but I'm feeling, I'm feeling really energized and really good because I feel that the people that I've met in this Listening Tour, um, the opportunities that are before us with receivership ending and being able to kind of remap what we want to do and, and how we want to do it and where we want to focus is such an exciting time to be part of change in, in that way. And I don't want to lose that opportunity. So I am very um, enthusiastic and gung ho um, about seizing it and building relationships. Um, but I will say that, and this gets back to my experience as a mom. Um, you know, not just a mom for um, my two kids, but being, you know, the mom on the football team or, you know, like that, these are all of our children, the, they're, they are, they are our kids, you know, whether, you know, I was their biological mom or not, you know, and, and we as a city, um, we just have an opportunity to embrace our young people because they are that future. You know, just as that song says so many years ago, and if we disinvest in our kids, um, we're disinvesting in, in a future for, for everyone and they deserve more than that. Um, and because of someone's life circumstances or because, um, you know, someone may have grown up uh, uh, in one neighborhood versus another, um, that doesn't mean that we aren't collectively responsible for the upbringing of our city overall, right? Uh, because we are, um, and I just, I, I feel really excited about um, trying to energize other people around that message.
How can people can get in contact with you? And while, while it's known for people who follow the school committee and all the elected positions in, in our city that all this information is available at the Hoyok website as well as the school department, uh, Hoyok Public Schools website. How can people get to connect with you if they need to reach out, have a conversation, uh, share anything that they are thinking or going through?
Yeah, I will have an official um, Hoyok Public Schools email address. I don't have one yet because I'm not on the board. But um, they can reach me at my Gmail account, which is um, P Lubold Ward Six at gmail dot com. Or they can, you know, give me a call or shoot me a text. It's four one three five three zero six six five four. Um, you know, I'm always open to talk and, and, and to hear, hear from people. Um, I love to, you know, bat around ideas and brainstorm, um, so, and I like to read. So I've had some folks on my Listening Tour give me a lot of reading material, which I am working through with my little sticky notes and questions. So I appreciate that, um, but I think it's, um, that they, people can feel free to, to um, also hit me up on Facebook for, um, it's uh, Patty Norris Lubold Ward Six for our, for Hoyok Schools. So, um, they can find me there too.
This is our conversation with Patty Lubold, newly elected school committee member for Ward Six in the city of Hoyok. And we are getting to know what are the plans and this is really a great opportunity to start from, from scratch on things that are important, that are meaningful. And for that, I am really grateful, Patty, that you made the time to be here with us. And all the work that you are doing, this investment of energy, time and commitment to your community, which is, is clear. And looking forward to see all the accomplishments that can be done uh, come January.
Well, thank you and I can't wait to come back and share more with you.